Would like to call to order this regular meeting of the city council, which is known as for today. Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Shepherd-Rami?
Here.
Councilmember Talt?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Here.
And Mayor Udi?
Here. The agenda is posted 72 hours prior to each meeting at the City Hall, the Crow Public Library, the Stoneman Building, and on the city's website. Public comments. At this time, the city welcomes public input. The public may address the city council on items not on the agenda, but pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on any issues not on the agenda. Please note that any comments will be limited to two minutes and will be timed by staff. City Clerk Baker, would you please explain how we will receive public comments this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. We will accept comments in three ways. We will take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it in to me if you wish to speak on an item. There is a countdown timer to the left of the public microphone to help speakers keep track of the remaining time to speak. We also, we will also accept comments via email sent to cityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org. The email address is also found on the agenda. These will then be read into the record. We must receive these emails before the public comment period for the particular item ends. The comments may be summarized, if necessary, to limit it to under two minutes. We will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raised hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants and then clicking on Raised Hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you are asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to make any comments this evening?
Yes, we do via Zoom. Ms. Mimi Nakamura?
Hi, I'd like to find out what the timeframe is for the SB nine interim ordinance. We, I didn't see it in the agenda tonight, so it does need to be in prior to December 31st, the end of this year to qualify to, anyway, I just like to find out when it would be up for the city council's vote.
Thank you. The city manager might have a quick comment on that?
I sure do. Thanks so much for that question. Because of the Thanksgiving holiday, we missed the noticing requirement in the paper because the timeline moved up a little bit. So the council does have a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday at 6:00 PM here in the San Marino Center, and that will be one of the items on the agenda.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
There are another request for comment.
Perfect. City Manager's report. Dr. Marlowe?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a whopping one slide for you this evening. We have some fun things to announce. First off, we have, hey, wait a minute. Try that again. There we go. All right, we have our holiday shop local bingo event that's going on right now, where you can get your bingo card at some of our participating businesses in San Marino, so please join in on that. And we also have our light-up San Marino event going on to celebrate the most festive home in town, and I know there'll be a lot of competition for that. We're very excited. On the important news front, as a reminder to the community, we have our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force application period open right now. It is something incredibly important to the city, it's something important to the city council, and we are moving on this. I suspect, given the holidays, that applications are a little bit slow. The deadline was supposed to be this Friday, December 10th. I suspect that we will probably end up extending that, just to be sure that everyone who has a chance to express their interest is able to. But if this is something that you are interested in, please, please, please go to our website and submit your application so that we can have some conversation about DEI in the city. Last but not least, I would like to introduce a new member of our team, Ms. Nicole Quadra, sitting up in the front corner alone, is her new Community Engagement Manager. She joined our executive team this week, and we are delighted to have her here. She comes to us most recently from five years with the City of Ontario, doing quite a lot of communications and analyst-level work in the City Manager's office. So we are pleased and honored to have her here and glad to have her join the team. And in light of tonight's festivities, that will conclude my report, although, of course, I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Did any members of council have any questions to the city manager?
Just welcome.
Welcome. Is there a motion to waive further readings?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to the reorganization of the city council.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes.
You're not getting away so quickly, and we're going to add extra minutes to this meeting, so I apologize upfront. I want to say you have been a wonderful leader through this last year. You have kept us on task. You have contributed so much to the work of the city. I know that our finance department has a deep debt to you in setting different procedures in place, helping us with dashboards. You were helpful with the 117 trust that we set up. And on a personal note, you were always professional, kind, and welcoming of my input, and sometimes even when you disagreed with me, you changed your mind. That's saying quite a bit. So I would like-
I've been trained by ladies, yes.
I would like to say, the San Marino City Council, on behalf of the citizens of San Marino, wish to express their appreciation to Ken Udi, Mayor, for his dedicated services, Mayor, to the city of San Marino and its residents, December 9, 2020 through December 8, 2021, and we are just so very, very appreciative.
Thank you, Susan, for the kind words. And on my official passing of the gavel activities here, I just wanted to recap a few things and say a few thank yous and shout-outs. So when I looked at my notes a year ago, I'm coming in here, you know, I think we did accomplish a lot of things and some very personal and special shout-outs. And first name bases, not official titles. Michael, thank you for all you've done with the capital improvement program for spearheading the San Marino Center. You know, we really appreciate everything you've done, even though Twin Palms did not get resurfaced this year. Paul, and I'm glad that Mark is here, too. Really appreciate your hard work and for the city to know this is the third year in a row where we've had 100% clean audit, where before, you know, there were some big discrepancies. So, Mark, thank you for scrubbing and cleaning up, and Paul, thank you for being receptive to new budgeting processes and reporting practices, because I think it's really made a big difference, so thank you. And Annie, I'm glad you're here tonight. Thank you for re-upping, again, for treasure, for your work on the, on the bond and the champion of the East-West Bank relationship. That was huge, so thank you. Mario, you're always a rock. You're a great leader, particularly in the challenging times of COVID, so, so thank you for being, you know, being there and being balanced. Appreciate that. John, you, you've kind of turned into the, the face of the community, so really appreciate your outreach and your community involvement and also your, your leadership, you know, on the police force, because we've seen, you know, crime and such as be, you know, really under control, so thank you very much. Kathy, welcome. You know, I've seen a few months of your input, but we're glad you're here. And I look for Alex, but we're going to pass over Alex, because he's a temporary. But, but I hope Aldo is, is watching yours here, because I want to thank Aldo for his, what, 14 years of service and for his passion on-
Aldo is-
Oh, there he is. You made it. Aldo, thank you very much, and thank you for your passion for the economic development. I'm sorry we were not able to deliver on a few of those projects that were, that were important to you, but appreciate your service and thank you for zooming in tonight. And Marcel, I really appreciate the relationship working with you. You're, you're a strong leader, but you're also open and receptive to change, so I appreciate that, so thank you. And then, then for the, for the community, those people, if you're out there on that San Marino Center Task Force, you were all-stars, so really appreciate that. Appreciate the Johnsons being here, even though Charlene, every once in a while, we have to go like that. To the, to the council, you know, one of the, I want to appreciate your, your support and giving me the opportunity to pound the gavel occasionally, and we had a goal of being under two hours. We were two hours and 10 minutes on an average for all of our meetings, and if those involved in the school district would have appreciated the housing element, we would have been under. And if we did not have a filming issue to talk about, we would have been under to two hours, and I want you to know that we had a one hour and 25-minute reduction in time or 35%, so I think we, we did, we did pretty good. And then, and then finally, to the family, Kathy and Kristen, thank you for, for being here, and Kathy, for letting me stay out at night with these fun long meetings occasionally. And Carolyn, you, you might be there, or Allison, your family, so, so thank you very much, and it's been a good experience, and I would encourage other people out there to consider, consider that as well.
If, if I could just make some brief comments. Ken, through this last year, I first want to say for a job well done. You came in with the idea that you wanted to streamline the process, streamline some of the ways we look at problems more from a business side while still dealing with the political policy side, and you have achieved that, and you've achieved that without, without ever losing your temper, which actually kind of bothers me, because it gives me, gives me something to look forward to. But Ken, I, I really appreciate the work you've done, and you taught us a lot on how business and, and government can work together and use each other's processes to great success. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I'd like to move on to item two.
Before we do that, one last piece for you. So you will now have free time. We have a heritage edition of San Marino opally, opally, still hereditarily sealed for your pleasure, because I know you'll have so much more free time. Enjoy it.
He's going to be busy. He's going to be busy. Point goal.
Yeah. All right. I would like to move on to item two with a motion. And I move that we appoint Councilmember Susan Jacobowski to be the next mayor of the city of San Marino. Is there a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call?
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
A thankful yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then I have a second motion. I'd like to move that we appoint Councilmember Stephen Talt to be the vice mayor for the next year. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
I might leave it hanging a little bit longer, but we're on a tight schedule.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I go over there?
Give us just one moment while we replace the seating cards.
Oh, no.
Should I ask to have those pictures when I'm done? Okay, I'll speak first. Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues for this honor and to the residents of our outstanding city for having put your trust in me through our election process. I offer special thanks to those in this room, among many others, who worked hard to get me elected, and a special thanks to my campaign chair, Liz Hollingsworth, and treasurer Al Bog, who are here tonight. You continue to give me wise kitchen cabinet advice and call me out when you disagree with my issue, my approach on issues. I look forward to continued collaboration with Dr. Marlowe and the executive team, Annie Han, our city treasurer, and our attorney, Joe Montez. You are each so bright, innovative, and selfless, and you're giving to our city, particularly in these days of COVID. I look forward to the rich, ongoing partnerships with our city's crown jewels, the Chinese Club of San Marino, the San Marino City Club, San Marino Rotary, and the San Marino Chamber of Commerce, among many others. Collectively, these groups have served the residents of our city for more than 250 years. What's ahead in the coming year? Lots, actually. We do need, know that SB nine will take effect on January 1st, 2022. This will allow developers and others to split our residential lots and build two new duplexes on each lot with very limited exceptions and approval processes. This is not what we desire. We fought hard not to have this new law enacted with special appreciation given to Aldo Cervantes, again on screen. Thank you, Aldo, formerly, formerly our Director of Community Development. Our community was carefully and thoughtfully planned over 100 years ago, and each generation has honored its integrity and beauty. Our council members wrote letters, sent emails, made phone calls, and met with our state legislative representatives. Despite our efforts and those of so many representatives, the legislation was enacted. Notwithstanding SB nine in a week, our council will consider ordinances that will retain some level of control over those split lots and duplexes. At the same time, I urge all residents to join in the effort to help obtain 1 million signatures statewide, to place a measure on the ballot in November 2022. It would restore local land use control and prohibit the state from ever overriding local zoning regulations again. I promise to be a champion of this process. Thank you to all who have given input to our current housing element, including the Residential Needs Assessment Component. That's the RENA we hear so much about. We have been required to accommodate the potential development of 397 more housing units in our small city over the next eight years. Although we recently submitted our draft plan to housing and community development, again, thank you, former director Cervantes, we know that once our state submission is reviewed, we may likely face more revisions. For that, we are at the ready to engage our community and, once again, keep the impact as minimal as possible. We made commitments to the community and to ourselves this past year, which I plan to guide. In working with a consultant, we will be facilitating a work group to develop the next iteration of our city's general plan. This is a big job, calling for collective visioning. Additionally, we will be developing a diverse work group of residents to address diversity, equity, and inclusion. I am so proud that this is an extension of my 2017 campaign slogan, "We Are One San Marino." I strongly encourage residents to place their mark on these two important documents and go to the city's website to apply to participate. Following an outstanding year of extended community discussion and input, we approved architectural plans and will soon be receiving construction bids for our current Camp San Marino Community Center modernization program. With our citizen volunteer team guiding us, we are excited to see a place that will take us into the next generation with wonderful programs and offerings. Additionally, I'm excited to share an innovative partnership program initiated, initiated by our San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. San Marino has been presented with the opportunity to participate in the ground floor planning of a voluntary outreach program. This came about as a result of our city, public safety officials, citizens, and other professionals in San Marino expressing concern for, for residents and others experiencing difficult times in their lives. During a recent ride along with our police department, I observed what has been talked about for a long time. This program would not involve law enforcement, but would rather be staffed by clinicians 24/7 through a model that has been successful in other cities. Although the decision on whether to participate will be down the road, do stay tuned, this could be a great program. Finally, I would be remiss without giving thanks to the wonderful influence and love of my now-deceased parents, Edwin and Genevieve, who always emulated generosity while keeping simple values. And hello to my brothers Ron and Dave on the East Coast, who've always offered support. I also thank the women before me, who modeled confidence in leadership, and those who supported me so long ago with what was a very bumpy road. Council, let's begin and make this last year of our term together rock. Thank you.
And, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I believe that you have some people here who would like to address you and potentially give you some things, so if that is the case, please feel free to come on up.
And I would love to get a photograph of mine.
Let's go.
Of course, you're the mayor, you're-
It's big guy.
What does that say?
What's that? I have no idea. They just-
You have no idea what it says?
I don't want to waste this.
I mean, if I do, I give up my-
I think I still have the ones-
I mean, but should we tell them?
The symbol, now the right word, the-
Did we get flowers? Did we get flowers?
No, the answer is no.
Velvet here.
I told you I didn't want.
But no flower, no fruit.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah. You're not worth it.
Velvet here. Huge box.
I'll bring you a martini.
I don't want just a martini.
Velvet here. Oh, man. Yeah, ask him what to-
Well, Madam Mayor, we are going to throw you into the deep end quickly in a moment. Madam Mayor, there's been a request from the Chinese Club to address their item a little sooner, so if you would, I don't think anybody has any interest in pulling the item, so could I ask you to move the consent calendar up to now?
Yes, let us do that. Let's move the consent calendar. Those are items six through 12. Was, is there anybody who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Hearing none. Do I have a motion for approval?
Excuse me, ma'am?
Yes.
We did have one public comment, public comment come in for our consent item.
Yes, please.
That was consent item number 11, and it was an email from Ms. Stephanie Johnson. She had some comments about the differences in logo between what's on the banner, the Chinese club, and the city. I was able to distribute this comment to the council and to the public prior to the meeting, so everybody has, and I do not need to read it fully into the record.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Any other comments?
There are no other comments.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar, items six through 12.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Motion, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. There for me. And I just wanted to note, we did get supplemental materials as well from the Chinese Club of San Marino with the, which we did not have in our packet as well.
Correct, those were also distributed to the public beforehand.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along.
Thank you.
Thank you. Round to new business, item number four, receive and file annual comprehensive financial report, the annual audit for the fiscal year ending 30, June 30, 2021. I believe we will be receiving a report from Director Chung and Accounting Manager Mark Siegfried.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. We also have our auditor, LSL, on also, and he will also have a short presentation toward the end. Tonight, we will be presenting to the council the, what we call now the annual comprehensive financial statement. I know our, the PowerPoint says annual financial statement. That was our report last year and the years prior to that. Mark and I worked really hard this year with the auditors, and we were able to draft and complete our first annual comprehensive financial report. In prior years, it was referenced as the comprehensive annual financial report, but the GFOA has stated that moving forward, we would reference it as the annual comprehensive financial report. And that's really the number one highlight tonight, and the reason for the, is the acronym that they, that we use now. is that it really embeds additional transparency, additional reporting. And I just wanted to highlight three things that it does bring. It also bring, in the report, now we have a transmittal letter which provides additional information about the city and its overall finances. There's also the financial section, the meat of the report. And then lastly, also includes a statistical section, provides additional demographic data. And so this ACFR is important in a sense that this pretty much brings our financial report to the best transparency and additional information report that any government entity can provide to the public and also invest potential investors for bond issuances and just overall reviewing the status of the city's overall financial condition. So I am really proud that we were able to accomplish that this particular year. With that said, another highlight that I wanted to show the council is that we've made a lot of good progress here on our audit front. As the former mayor and now, can Udi mention that back in 2015, we had almost six findings and weaknesses, but the last three years, we're able to have a clean audit. And that really comes from Mark, his great work on the audit field and also my team on, on the finance side, making sure all our books are, are closed on the right time. Everything's reconciled, all our cash and investments. And so I do commend my group and of course, Mark Siegfried, our accounting manager, for the great work he's done for the city. Overall, the city's finances remain strong and healthy. And I'll turn it over to Mark to talk about some of the financial data behind the report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to go over some brief financial highlights which are embedded in the financial statements. First thing is the city's net position. There's a small typo. That's actually behind the increase of 0.6 million or 0.3% from prior year. This is mostly due to revenues increasing 0.3 million or 0.9% from last year. This is the strong, the main reason is still a strong growth in property taxes year over year. And expenditures were down 0.9 million or 0.8%. That's the main driver of this, because the community services department was on a limited capacity due to COVID. They have now resumed full services. Our general fund balance has increased 0.9 million, it's up to 16.2 million as of June 30th, 2021. And this is a 65% reserve ratio when measured against general fund revenues. And this meets our fiscal policy, which states we must have 40% general fund reserves when measuring it for revenues. When translating this, it means we have $3.9 million transfer to the capital projects fund. We will be presenting a possible item in February during our mid-year status report to possibly transfer over 3.9 million to future capital projects. Two other highlights, our pension liability is 35.7 million. Our unfunded pension liability is 35.7 million, which is an increase of 3.1 million. And our open liability is now 8 million, which is an increase of 1.7 million as of June 30th, 2021.
Thank you, Mark. And I'll turn it over to our auditor LSL to conclude the presentation. Brian, are you there?
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mark and Paul. You could go ahead and, and advance the slide. My name is Brian Gruber and I'm with LSL CPAs. We've been engaged by the city to conduct a financial statement audit for the year ended June 30, 2021 and assist in preparing the city's first annual comprehensive annual financial report. The purpose of an audit is the expression of an opinion on the financial statements. We design our audit in accordance with professional standards to plan and perform our audit to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are properly stated in all material respects. As a result of our audit, we issue a few different communication letters on the next slide. The, the, the primary letter and communications is included in the annual financial statements and it's referred to as our independent auditor's report. As, as discussed earlier, we expressed an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which, which an unmodified opinion means that the financial statements have been audited and they can be relied upon by readers of the financial statements, that those statements are properly presented in all material respects and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This is the opinion you would seek to achieve in a financial statement audit. In, in conjunction with the audit, we also issue a couple of communication letters. The first is our report on internal control and compliance. And second is our auditor communication letter. We're required to report to the governing body any deficiencies that we identify in, in, while conducting our audit in the internal control structure or with, with compliance. We identified no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control and no instances of non-compliance. In, in the audit communication letter, we also communicate if we have difficulties conducting the audit, if staff are failing to provide information or, or if we have disagreements during the audit process while, while conducting the audit, please to report that we had no disagreements, difficulties, or adjustments that were completed during the audit. That concludes my presentation. I think the next slide is just if, if, if the city council has any questions for myself or, or Mark or Paul. Thank you.
And is that?
Yes, that concludes our presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to start with questions from the council. It feels weird saying it, but Councilmember Udi, would you like to begin?
No questions, just congratulations, Mark and Paul. Thank you.
Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney?
I have only one small question, but most of all, huge thanks to both of you for excellent reports and all the work that went into it. This is very clear and clean, as well as I'm, I'm thrilled. I did read the letter at the end and very impressed with all the statements that were made by the accountant recognizing the work in our financial condition and everything that you've done here to portray that correctly. My only question is a very general one on page 29 of 306, and this is in the staff report. And it is mentioned under the very first section, investment in capital assets, that $305,607 for Lacy Park restroom upgrades. And I was just wondering, that seems long ago. So is that something? Is that because this is reporting on last year's and that final check was cut last year? Because it seems like the project itself was finished in 2019. But maybe I'm wrong in the timing of that. That's only, the only thing. Is that a carryover because we still were paying? Or I, I don't remember the sequence of payments. And so I just, that came to my attention, but that's a very minor. Just wondering how that was paid out? Or do we still have that as an open project?
It's a great question. And Mark and I confirmed that it's, the construction of the project was done. It's just the timing of the payment.
Okay.
There was payment.
That's what I thought it must have been. Thank you so much. I think that was it. And just congratulations on an excellent job.
Councilmember Wong?
No, no, thank you.
And Vice Mayor Talt?
Thank you, Mayor. My questions are related only to the CalPERS, excuse me, pension plans. And that is, is there someplace in the report? I looked at it and I couldn't find where there's a comparative analysis on the year-to-year growth of the unfunded pension liability?
There is.
Could you point that, okay, because I looked for it and I couldn't find it. I, I know that the, that in note nine, you deal with a lot of the issues on page 94 to 306.
There's a whole, and note nine is, is the go-to regards to the detail behind the CalPERS.
And then in the, in the required supplementary information on page 56 of the financial statement, I don't have your agenda packet page number, but on 56 of the financial statement, it shows the trend of the pension liability since, since the, the adoption of Gatsby 68.
Just let me.
Yeah, I don't have your agenda packet page, but it's 56 on the financial statement.
Okay. For some share net pension liability.
So for the miscellaneous plan at the top, and then the safety plan is below, and it shows the proportionate share of net pension liability is your total liability being reported. That's the net pension liability. And, and it shows the trend information there for, for 2000, for 21, 2019, and 2018.
And, and what I'm looking for, well, you know, something, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and take a look at this and, and, and reading it. If I have any questions, I'll follow up subsequently. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any further?
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you. And I just have one question. This goes back to what Mr. Siegfried was presenting on. The general fund balance, where you stated 3.9 million could be transferred to capital projects fund. If we so desire, desired to discuss the issue further, could any of this money be used to be added to the trust fund that we started this year? Would that be an appropriate use of any of this money?
Yes, the answer would be, it would be, of course, a discretion of the council. If annually in February, I come to the council with excess cash in the, in the general fund and the council at that time has an opportunity to move that excess cash to the capital improvement fund. Last year was the first year that we actually, the council decided to open a 115 trust and move half a million dollars to that trust fund. And to answer your question, this coming year, it would be approximately for $3.9 million. Could we additionally fund? Yes, I do need to do more analysis and I would like to meet with the financiers on, and also and the city treasurer and I actually met on this topic and we've been continuing to discuss what the best route of investing these funds will be. Is it better to just recommend to move everything to the capital fund or actually additionally fund the OPEF fund? Or even potentially the pension fund? So we are discussing that and we should have a definite answer by the time February comes around.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'd like to open the item up for public comment. Does anyone here wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, do we have anybody in the virtual world who'd like to speak?
I have no request for comments on this. I am here.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to bring the item back to the council for discussion. Do I have any additional comments, questions from the council? Councilwoman?
No, thank you.
No.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to receive and file the audited financial statement for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2021.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to item number five, receive and file financial report for the first quarter, July 21 through September 2021. May I please ask on the same presenters to come forward again? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. If you could bring up the PowerPoint, that'd be great. Thank you. Tonight, I'll be presenting the financial status report for the first quarter that covers the months of July 2021 to September 2021. And also I have the city treasurer here, that, that will present the cash and investments report.
Wonderful.
So just to touch on the highlights, for the first quarter revenues, we were at $1.7 million and we were basically in line with what, what we performed last year at $1.8 million. If we look at the general fund, we were slightly less by $5,000. And so on the general fund side, there's a couple of items that make it a little less than last year. Our taxes overall are 8.4% higher than last year. So our tax base continues to be strong. Charges for service where recreation and libraries revenues reside, we see a big increase there. It's up about 60%. And that's all reflected. The details are in the report. And, but then we do see an offset on fines. And that was basically based on the tree fines. Last year, we had a big tree fine come in during this period. This year, we did not. And also last year, we also got our first CARES Act funding that came through. This year, we did not. So it's just an offset, but overall, I do forecast that next quarter, you do see a big increase. During the first quarter, our revenues tend to be lower, being that our property taxes come in, of course, in the second, third quarter and the fourth quarter of the, of the reporting period when the property taxes come in. So I'm not too concerned here. And on the public safety, I'm sorry, I got touched on the public safety fund, you do see a negative 30%. And the reason for that decrease is really just one time. It's a strike team reimbursement that we got last year versus we didn't get that this year. So it's really offset by expenditures, of course, on the strike team. So that's not a concern there. So overall, if you took $73,000 out, correct, the public safety fund saw an increase from last year. On the expenditure side, our expenditures are $7.2 million versus $7.1 million, slightly higher. On the general fund, we do see a slight decrease and that's really driven by salary savings. On the public safety side, we do see an increase and that naturally is because we did get the 2% increase in MOUs this particular, what is it, quarter? So we did see that increase there. On the net income side, overall, the general fund net income was pretty much in line with last year at $20,000. And then on the public safety fund side, slightly less at $141,000, but is expected and is in line with what the budget is expecting. Lastly, here on my side, on my slide is the fund balance. The, we ended the month of September 30th at $10 million versus 9.7 this time last year. So we did see an increase of $200,000. And also on the CFP fund, we did see an increase of 0.8 million. You know, we ended the quarter at 17.8 versus 17 million prior year. That number seems high, but one thing to, to take in consideration is that we do have quite a bit of CFP projects in the line for this year. As you know, this is San Marino Center, the Huntington Mission Street beautification and also, of course, the street rehab project that will be estimated to be about $10 million. That should decrease the CFP fund balance by the fiscal year end. With that said, I will turn it over to our city treasurer.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Paul and Mark for doing such a great job for cleaning audit for the last three years. That's just awesome. We have come a long way and clean audit, no finding, no adjustments. That's just awesome. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work and, and thank you for the entire finance team. The next two slides, pretty much it's, it's just summary of our cash and investment positions and also long-term and short-term rates. We, as of September 30th of 2021, our cash position is at $32,987,86,000. I mean, $786 compared to year before, we're at 29. And as of May of this year, May of 2021, our total cash balance is over $40 million. So that's the highest ever that the city's liquidity is over 40 million. So that's a good story there. And since May, and if you look at the chart, May, June, July, August, and September, and you see the difference between two years is greater. So part of it, it's the, the $1.6 million we receive from the government for COVID money. But the delta is greater year over year. And the next slide, please. This one is a comparison between long-term rate and short-term rate. At the beginning of the pandemic, the short-term rate was higher. So we had most of our cash in our money market account at the bank and it was earning pretty decent rate. And as you can see, the rate for long term has been going up since this year. Five year treasury is the top one. It's hard to tell the color, but the blue bluish color. Five year treasury as of September thirtieth is it was at zero point nine eight percent. Our rate for city is the second one. It's at zero point four four percent. Lave is down at zero point two zero six percent, and one year treasury is at point zero nine percent. For our total investment, out of the thirty two million dollar. Out of the thirty two million liquidity, we have about four point six in different CDs in different terms. One year, we're at, we have five CDs, and it's about twenty six percent of our portfolio. We have two years maturity at sixteen percent, three years, another sixteen percent, four years at nine percent, and five years, we have the most at thirty three percent. And that was as of September, the end of September. And since then, between September thirtieth and today, we pick up five more CDs in long term. So it's going to increase our yield going forward because we try to just adjust our portfolio with the trend of the market. If the long term rate is going up, and we're gonna switch from short term in money market account into long term CDs. And this this pretty much concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, please let us know.
Thank you. We will move to questions from council. Councilmember Huang, would you like to start? Do you have any questions?
No question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shepard Rami, any questions?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Jacobowski. My first question, these are, I think, to Paul concerning the fines and forfeiture drop. I think you spoke about that, and then there's a note, excuse me, on page one seventy four of our packet midway down that describes that the city had to reimburse, I'm quoting from it, tree fines that were previously assessed based upon judgment by the city's code enforcement hearing officer. So can you give us or give me an idea of what happened? And was that one particular large fine that was reduced, or is that several? I remember pointing this out when we go through our monthly disbursements, so to speak. But since you drew it out, but then you mentioned that we had something else when you made your reports. I'm just trying to figure out what's going on with the tree fines and why we're having to overturn or reverse or refund them.
So I can't speak for why the tree for the hearing officer and why it was overturned. I do not know the top of my head how many I I don't want to misspeak. I'm thinking three, but I could be wrong on that. But I know it's no more than three tree fines that were, what is it reimbursed or refunded back to the resident? To the context of why the path, the process is that it gets reviewed by the minister, the hearing officer, and then that he or she, I'm not sure, makes the judgment, gets forwarded to the interim community development director, reviews that, and then signs and reviews assigns it and sends it back to finance to issue the refund. And that's been the process. Regards to specifics, I have to look, and I can always get back to you on the specifics on the item.
Okay, just because if I recall correctly, and there were a couple of them, probably two or three, that I remember seeing that reversed tree fines, and there's not, at least as far as what the city or even residents, other than the person involved, I guess, and staff, were unaware of the reasons for the change, if you will, what findings are made when they do that? Because we do have a pretty specific calculation program, and it's changed now. But I'm just wondering if we're going to deal with that, if it's becoming a problem that it takes time and we end up having to reimburse. If somebody like the community development director interim community director Hamilton or you are just kind of monitoring to see, because I have not seen permits in weeks, so I don't know what the status is of some.
I'm not sure the question that you're asking regards to what clarity.
I guess the procedure involved in that when they reduce refund the money. Or reimbursement.
We can get the follow up on that and then report back to council. How would that?
That's fine. Is that okay?
We can. Yes, regardless of the specific quarter, I can provide you what the exact refunds were for, and we have, of course, the backup and why it was issued and the hearing officers' notes and and the write up regards.
Thank you, and I'd appreciate that. I know Director Hamilton, we spoke about that just generally as a procedural matter before, and I know that you're working toward helping this process be better.
And sometimes those those fines are returned because they shouldn't have been issued in the first place. I know one case, but they 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 went ahead and paid the money and then went through the process, and it was agreed that it shouldn't have been. It was actually somebody else's fault. So I see. And it was a pretty substantial amount, too, but they agreed just to go through the process and thought it was appropriate.
All right, that'd be helpful. Thank you. Just because it did jump out of me. The other one on the on the same page that I wanted to get further information from had to do with the non departmental expenses because it was or to date, it's an eighty percent, and there's no notes on the expenses in some of these, well, particularly that one, because it was a significant change. I just wanted to know, and if you need to get back to me on that, that would be fine to find out what was included.
As I was, as the city treasurer is presenting, I was scanning just the percentages, and I saw that eighty eight percent.
Yeah.
And I was scratching my head, thinking, what was that for? And to be honest with you, I do not know. It could be a timing item, but I will definitely get back to him what that item was.
All right, and that may very well be, but it just struck me also as a large percentage that I wanted to follow up to see if we were off on something and and what we could do to adjust that.
Mark and I, we do our best to to not only provide enough notes, but when we get too detailed into too many notes, and it becomes a long paragraph, but we do look at big ticket items, but this one I'll get back to on.
Thank you very much. That that was it. Those two areas, I'd appreciate a little bit more clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Tal.
Yes, a couple of questions. First of all, in in looking at the the capital expenditures, it is was the bathroom expenditures at Lacy Park? Is that was a net number? Because didn't we have a recovery on that from the bond? It it pursuant to whatever resolution we reached in that regard?
Yeah, we did have recovery.
Or is that dealt with someplace else?
The three hundred thousand going back to the financial report, is that where?
It it was, yeah, the the CIP expenditures by month in October. You say due to Lacy Lacy Park Restoration Project in fiscal year twenty, and you have a bullet point there. My question is, is that number reflective of a the the gross that we paid or the net after the recovery?
That's the net that we.
That is the net. Okay. Second question is with respect to the you you mentioned the strike team up there.
Yes.
What don't we anticipate a recovery for some strike team as a result of the work we did up in Tahoe and elsewhere? Or has that already come in?
You know, I referred that to Chief. I believe we got reimbursed for all the fire that was dispatched up there, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
No, I can't imagine the Forest Services processed that. They've had thousands of these requests to to process, so I don't believe we've received our strike team reimbursements for this year.
Okay.
Chief, since you're there, how how far in arrears should we expect average strike team reimbursement to take?
Because Northern California was, the entire half of the state was burning. I I would anticipate six to ten months to get those reimbursements.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I am done. Thank you very much, both of you. I sleep a little night, a little easier knowing that you guys are on on top of this because I should.
I I would like to thank you for an excellent report. And treasure, Han, when you were complimenting the gentleman on the work they did with the audit, you are no slouch yourself, but somehow you keep grinding out these great returns on our money that are really hard to find. So I'm really pleased to see that our five year treasuries are starting to trend upward. Do you envision going forward, doing more of those? I know Lave is pathetically low right now. What do you see as your near game plan to keep getting us the best that we can get?
It's really hard to predict the future with the stock market so volatile right now. You know, we 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 have quite a large balance still in short term. So that gives us the flexibility of investing according to the market trend. Right now, we're trying to book as many long term CD cannot go over five years as we can. But we'll see if we're too heavy on the five year, then we will. Paul and I will will discuss and see what we should do going forward. So we will monitor the the market very closely before we make the next move. One more thing I forgot to mention earlier is our investments on the servant, C R B T? Yes, it's been doing great, and as of September, we are our rate of return is almost six percent. That's since inception, and inception was only July of this year. So this is looking really great.
Surface the one fifteen trust, so put hundred, oh, half a million dollars to us.
You know where some wheels are turning over here. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. At this point, I'd like to open it to questions from anybody in the audience. Are there any questions here? If I see none, do we have anyone virtually with questions? Questions?
There are no requests for comments on this item.
Thank you. At this time, I'll bring it back to council for discussion. Are there any additional comments or questions from council? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I move to receive and file the financial report reflecting the city's revenues and expenses as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty one.
And a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talts?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving forward, we have completed our consent calendar. We will move on to I'm sorry, was item twelve part of the consent? Okay, then at this point, we will move on to written communications or public writings distributed. It has, is there anyone here who would like to share any communications that they have received? Seeing none. Public comments. Is there anybody who would like to speak at this time on any matter not on the agenda? I see nobody in this room stepping forward. Do we have any virtual comments?
There are no requests for comments.
Okay, thank you, and I'd like to move to our last item with council members. Is there anything that you would like to see on a future council agenda? Councilwoman Shepard Rami?
I, yes, it's come to my attention, and I'm sure we've all read the paper about the incredible climate crisis we're in in the state, particularly with regard to water. And I know that the state Water Board this last week has put forward some measures for mandatory changes. So I would like to see if staff could bring forward, at this point, a program of putting out those voluntary, you know, what day of the week, I believe we have banners saying, reminding people about what days they should be watering. Obviously, there might be even stricter guidelines that are forced upon us, so to speak, in January, if that state, if the proposal at the state level is adopted. So I don't think we need to actually talk about percentages, but just put that reminder out there and get people thinking about reducing their water to twice a week or some sort of program, if my other council members are comfortable with. And that would be at least a voluntary step at this time to get us, get our residents thinking before there's a fine structure involved, because it may be pretty harsh should they adopt that program proposal that they have.
Thank you. And along with that recommendation, I would like to recommend, I know I had brought this up before we reached a crisis stage, but the Metropolitan Water District has an extremely sobering presentation that is available, and they remind us that we have enough water right now, but next year, it may be within our homes that this rationing will occur. I think it would be a really helpful presentation to have with the council and encourage the public to watch. Yes, city manager.
Perhaps a presentation from MWD and also some ideas about engagement with the community on how to redo. Okay. That would be great. And also about the not, I know the other things they're looking at for finding is the watering of sidewalks or hardscape, you know, to not water that down. So maybe I I'm sure you can even find those same provisions, but to try to have those things addressed because there is a fine structure, and it starts at five hundred dollars per. And I I wouldn't want code enforcement to have to do that, nor our residents to be, you know, faced with such things. So I'm hoping we could just start the education process now. Thank you.
In that same regard, perhaps we would have a report from John Morris, who is has not been reporting directly to us for a while. But it be in recent discussions with the, he identified that there is a grant available for the review of leaky pipes. And it is money that we could use to ascertain whether or not we as a city are wasting money through leaky pipes. And so perhaps a presentation by Mr. Morris would be helpful.
I'm sure he would be delighted.
I'm sure he would, too.
Our other council members, any other water requests that you'd like to add to? Okay, Councilmember Udi, do you have any future items? Councilmember Huang?
Nope.
Vice Mayor?
Nope.
Okay, I have none. I I would like to mention, we had started this painfully a few meetings ago when we had a number of deaths of community members. This coming year going forward, we hope to get some criteria in place, but we would like to make that available to council members at the end of each meeting to be able to close in memory of residents who have lived here for a specified period of time or have served through our city. So hopefully, we can engage in that going forward. With that, there's nothing further. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.